We're going to call the next meeting. We're meeting in the planning section for the supervisor's order. Please stand with us. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, followed by open the subject.
To the flag, the United States of America. To the right. Say please. You may sit. That's all. Okay.
Welcome, everyone. Just a way of explanation for those of you who have not been to our meetings before. Process is. The planning commission automatically recommends the board supervisor for next defamation. Part of the seat. Please stick around. They will be on a part of decision. They will be on voting on the next decision. We only make recommendations for the planning section. Process is, I will read the case. I'll ask this person if he has anything to contribute to that this time. And then the planning commission will ask questions. The applicant will have a chance to speak. They will ask if anyone else wants to speak. And we will give them an opportunity to, uh, contribute to these cases tonight. First case on the agenda for, first off, we do have a forum for next meeting, planning session meeting. I'd like to make a motion to approve our agenda. Any changes? One second.
Move it to a public debate. Second.
Now, first and second, all in favor, say aye. I vote aye. Do what I want. Uh, next question, next item on the agenda is review and amendments for August 4th meeting. I'm sure everyone has read that. Changes, additions, or any other comments?
Okay. No changes, I get a motion to approve. Now, first, second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Pete. Pete Work will not be here tonight. Pete will be here virtually, and is. First item on our agenda for our public hearing tonight. We have three cases. First case is SU 009-2110. Mr. William Robbins has applied for a special use permit to operate an automotive repair shop in an agriculture zone parcel. In the A1 Zone District, an automotive repair shop is allowable only by special use permit. The subject parcel is roughly 16.8 acres and contains a single-family dwelling. The automotive repair shop would operate from an existing accessory structure, which is a detached garage. The parcel's dwelling has a postal address of 1190 Seville Road. Madison, Virginia, and is identified on Mass County Tax Map number 54-31. The entrance from this property is onto a public road. And I think that is the only, uh, there's no other people that share the driveway on this one. Mr. Webb, you have anything you want to add to this?
Uh, no, I'll just say that, uh, working with the applicant, of course, this was kind of a small hobby that sort of has evolved into a business. And Mr. Robbins has been very pleasant to work with and try to work out some conditions. And he understands, I think, the kind of the fear with garages and cars is that they kind of start accumulating and it becomes a kind of a junkyard over time. Uh, and that was the, you know, that was the concern. That was when it was, when my office was, when our office was called, the concern was really the appearance. I don't think there were any issues. Nobody pointed out anything about traffic, it was really the appearance and if it was going to kind of grow into a, uh, you know, you know, was this a garage? Was it permitted? And of course, you see the letter I sent to Mr. Robbins, and again, he responded very quickly. And we explained to him, you know, the garage itself, he did permit that as a residential garage, more or less. And if it were to be approved, as you can see, one of the conditions, and I have a, I have a list of just right here that I can pass out in a second. One of the conditions is that he would, he would upgrade the garage to beat the commercial standards. Really, talking to Jamie, our building official, the only thing he really needs to do is install a bathroom. Uh, that is required for a commercial garage. Otherwise, there are really a few small things. As far as, far as the number of cars that are on the site, which is again, kind of the main concern. He was, again, can limit it to no more than 10 cars. And that's not including his tow lot. He has a small tow area that by law is required to be fenced. So his tow business would go in there, his tow area. And he, uh, he would keep no more than 10 cars, that's not his own. He does have a few cars, pretty large family, so he does have some personal vehicles out there. And there's nothing wrong with that. Uh, but he would have no more than 10 vehicles anytime. Uh, that would be maybe part of the, the business. And I don't think he'll have that many, but what, uh, I think what will help is, if you look from Seville Road, uh, there's a fenced-in tow area. Then to the left, you have sort of a, a space where you can see the cars. So he's said he has no issue with putting a fence there or maybe, uh, you know, a landscape buffer, maybe some Leland Cypress or something like that, that would just totally wall off that whole area from, from, from being seen. Uh, and I'll just remind folks that, and I'll, I'll pass out the, sort of the revised conditions.
The same ones in the package, just a little bit different. Which I think is one little small.
Hey, Lincoln, if you can hear me, I can't hear.
You can't hear?
I can't hear the discussion, no, sorry.
Yeah, but let me, uh, I'll be sure to walk, talk into the microphone a little. Actually, I can just put you right here. So, is that better, Pete? Okay. So you look at the conditions, it wouldn't be transferable. Okay, so not going to sell it and have somebody else operate it. The, the second one. He'll come co-compliant with the building official within a year. Um, the third one. Again, that kind of talks about the co-compliance. All everything but the bathroom will be in compliance. There's a few other things, I think it's put an exit sign up and a few other things. Four, VDOT recommended him get an engineer to see if he would qualify for it's a low entrance commercial. And it would cost more to pay an engineer to tell him to put a low, low-volume entrance, commercial entrance. So Mr. Robbins just agreed to go ahead and install a low-volume commercial entrance. That holds up to 50 trips, and I think you might go into that just to see. The entrance, it's a, it's in the VDOT design manual, so I should, he's already working on getting someone to do that. And I just said by December 1st to have that installed. And again, there's a really good sight distance there. Five, we just talked about no more than 10 vehicles not registered to the owner on the site at any given time. Six, the landscape buffer or fence and that location that I had mentioned. And seven is the most, you know, is important. If you don't follow these conditions, then we can revoke a special use permit and become a zoning violation. And, you know, we don't want to, I'm not too worried about that. I think he's going to do what he says he's going to do. So, um, those would be the conditions. If you do incline to approve, you could just refer to these special use conditions as part of the approval. Any other questions for me?
Oh, so then. Sorry. Um, is this working though? I just had one consideration, so, you know, 10 vehicles, that would be what would be being worked on at the garage. And then basically, and then load it amount in the tow lot. And the tow lot's not really specified as a size, so it's really just standard on. And I'm not supposed to get to expanding a business.
Right. Well, I think required by law that cars he tow's have to be in that tow lot. So it's, it's not real big. It's, I don't know, maybe 1,000 square feet, um, maybe, so, um.
Or other cars being worked on. After I've been put in there to. I think I got, you know, maybe you got some sons or, you know, family or something. Like that maybe a lot of businesses are one person. And. I'm just, uh.
Any other parts from the planning question? Robert.
Uh, on these, you keep saying, "prostitual." We're not listed on the, um, quest.
Well, I, I, if you make a motion and just refer to these, and if you have an amendment to these, then just refer to these as part of your motion. And then what I do is like tomorrow, I will send the applicant, like you were approved, and these are your conditions. So it's a clear record and no confusion, what was. Yep.
Captain, Mr. Robbins, or have anything that you would like to add? It's Mr. Gregg, you got a first and a link?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have all read all the documentation on this particular application. We see what the proposed conditions are. I personally like the proposed conditions myself. This is on a, this property is right on the public road. The plaintiffs' issues have been addressed, I think. The plaintiffs are very nice. Man, any other comments for the planning commission, questions, whatever? If not, cannot get a motion.
Do you want to open the public hearing? Yeah, to make sure.
Comments from the public? Thank you. Back to the planning commission. I get a motion on this particular application. I recommend that we recommend case number SU 009-21-10 with condition of. Got those conditions for approval briefly. Now, first and a second, any other comments?
I'll just repeat that for Pete. Uh, Pete, we have a first and a second to approve with the conditions. Did you get that, Pete?
What's that?
We have a motion to approve Mr. Robbins' garage with a first and a second. Someone has.
Okay, I vote aye.
Okay, any other comments from the planning commission? First and second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Any other?
Hey, Lincoln, I'm not hearing anything the planning commission is saying.
Yeah, Pete, yeah.
All right, Pete, can you hear me now?
Pete.
I can hear you a little better now.
Okay, yeah, talk.
Okay. The planning commission unanimously recommends to the board of supervisors the approval of this special use permit. Okay. Next case on the agenda. Case number SU-09-21-11. Laura and Sean Fields have applied for a special use permit to operate an automotive repair shop on an A1 agriculture zone parcel. In the A1 zoning district, an automotive repair shop is allowable by special use permit. It fills on two adjoining parcels. The automotive repair shop would operate from an existing accessory structure, the garage, located on roughly 11.9 acre parcel. The adjoining 6.42 acre parcel is located, uh, is the location of their home and has a postal address of 379 Hurt Hollow Road, Banquo, Virginia. The parcel proposed for the location of the automotive repair shop does not contain a postal address, but is identified on Mass County Tax Map, Tax Map, that's 21-83C. Mr. Webb?
Okay, so if the first case, the main complaint was just visual, this complaint, slightly different, it's given that this is end of, end of a private drive. And we've talked about this quite a bit. The, the main complaint was the use, well, really was the traffic on the private drive. The number of cars, the, the nature of the vehicles, the rollbacks and things like that. So I went and looked at the site with our building official a few weeks ago. You know, generally speaking, we, and again, we've been upfront, you know, we did receive a complaint. The, there's sort of, sort of several issues that are concurrently going on. One is the, the structure itself that's operating of the business. Uh, that is a, was a farm exemption. Uh, there is sometimes misunderstanding people have with farm exemptions and what you can and can't do with farm exemption. The farm exemptions is what it says, it's for farm use. Uh, so a, a garage, even a, a personal garage would not qualify. So it was built under farm exemption. And so that's sort of the, the first issue. And again, sort of like the last one, that can be, that can be, uh, taken care of. Uh, that Mr. and Ms. Fields understand that we'll have to have an engineer certify that that building was built up to code. Uh, they seem to think that they, uh, that's not an issue, that it was built up to code. It looks, I mean, it looks good, uh, but I always say, I don't know what a header and a footer is. So I wouldn't really know, but, um, Jamie said that it's, it'll probably need a few things to be done uh, in order to bring the structure up to code. And again, in a commercial garage, it will need a bathroom. You know, as far as the number of cars, this is a little heavier volume. You know, this is their main, uh, sort of one of their principal ways of making a living is, is working on vehicles. I think it's mostly kind of custom work. Uh, they're not just doing oil changes and people coming up, they're doing fairly large jobs. And I estimate it that they're probably with parts deliveries, they're probably doing, maybe take a guess at 20 or 30 trips a week on that road. So it's a small business and, you know, I, I've read some comments online and I think they're always interesting because they're, you know, there, there are, there, I think there's some, some good comments that are made. And there are, there are, you know, this is a small business. You know, outside of large dealers and for car repairs, uh, these small repair shops are pretty, kind of have a little important role uh, and provide affordable places for folks to get their car fixed. So I think that's probably a good, uh, you know, a good point to bring up. And, you know, and I told them when I sent them the letter, I think that we will try to work with you, but we also understand with this particular Hurt Hollow, this private drive, that there are some, you know, there, there's some, some, they haven't always seen eye to eye with, with, with the neighbor on the road. As far as the private road goes, I've, I've gone to the courthouse and I've talked to Sean about this. Don't really want to give an, an opinion of whether, you know, if they have an issue over use of it. But, uh, it's pretty clear to me from looking through the deeds that this road has been there or, I mean, it's owned by a Berry family 100 years ago, and it looks like that road has, has been there in some shape or form for a long time. I don't see where, it's clear that anyone has exclusive rights to it or has to, you know, give someone else the, the ability to cross over. So I think it, you know, it kind of is what it is, it's there and it can be used. Uh, now, it does bring up a good point, it is, it is a narrow road. It, um, you know, it is a lot of, a lot of trips on a, on a very small, uh, private road. We can open up the hearing, I, I have a potential, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, when we, after the hearing, I have put together another list of conditions that are, again, pretty much the same thing as what's in your packet, but I will, well, I will pack it, I will just pass out this. One of the good things about special use permits is we, the localities are really given a, a lot of, a lot of, uh, broad authority in, in putting conditions on a special use permit. You know, we could even, this is not on here, but we could even do a revisit it in a few months to see if, if, you know, if the applicant, I think they were willing to, I think they are willing to do pretty much anything, uh, you know, within reason to, you know, sort of settle the, the, the issues that the neighbors might have with traffic. And I don't know if that could mean having deliveries come at a certain time during the morning. Um, and that's just something that could be discussed, but I'll just go over real quick the six conditions. And again, that could be added to tonight. Um, if you, you seem appropriate, you know, first one is a special use permit's not transferable. We give them a year, that's okay with the health department, to get a bathroom in. Become co-compliant. Uh, number three, a licensed engineer provide a certification for such a building constructed is under an agriculture's exemptions de-comply, is indeed compliant with all building codes. Um, and this report will, this is one small change I made. This report shall be provided to the building official within 45 days. So if they were to receive a special use permit, they'd have that to the building official. I had 30, I just thought with engineers and people are really busy right now, that maybe a little more time might be. Um, and then four, just simply basically states that the engineer does certify that it's, that it's built to code, that everything else that is done to the building, the bathroom installed, would be go through the building official's office. Just want to make sure that's understood. The fifth one, I just highlighted that. The applicant will maintain the entire length of the subject right away, leading to the garage. Uh, they already have a maintenance agreement to do so. I think they might, uh, Ms. Fields might have emailed that to you. Um, but this is something that could be expanded on. Maybe, maybe they improve the road some, maybe they, maybe we could even be as specific as you put gravel down every so many months. Um, I, you know, I'm just kind of guessing. And, you know, I guess one more other thing that could be added is potentially having this reviewed in six months to see if there's compliance and if maybe they have made some measures to sort of, uh, not, you know, I'm just thinking maybe, uh, to lessen the traffic on the road somehow, uh, when, 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 when the vehicles are, are delivered or whatnot. So, um, and again, I think that's a, for a adjacent property, that's, I don't care what your relationship is with your neighbors, that's going to be an issue in a private drive with pretty much anyone. So, and the last one is just fair, fair, fair to comply would constitute a zoning violation and, and we could revoke it. So, um, that's sort of all I have on it. Any questions for me?
What happened to the VDOT?
Oh, well, yeah, I, I, I don't really know. A VDOT sort of looks at this and gives a pro forma letter back, and I, I don't know what VDOT, I mean, and I. Uh, well, they sort of, they sent the letter saying that, you know, get an engineer to certify. But this is, I mean, this is a private drive, it, we, we kind of have an idea how many trips are on it. I'm just, I just think going above and beyond and getting an engineer certify that it's a, it's a dirt road that, you know, 30, 40 people use. I don't know what, other than maybe, they're not going to have any comment on a private drive. It's really just access to the public, to the public road.
I thought we were talking about access to public road. For this commercial operation.
Right. Well, they recommend that we get a, a private count, but I, I just don't know what, what, what improvement would they possibly make to that connection there? I mean, widen it, I mean, so that's why I think it's really up to us to figure out what the improvement should be, if any, right now to that, to that road. I, I just don't see where an engineer's comments that, okay, there are 50 trips to go back here a week. I mean, are they going to put a left turn lane in on bank? I mean, it's just, there's no other way to go. I mean, it's, so that, that's why I, um, to sort of, you know, I think it was just the planning commissioner and board just needs to have a conversation of what, what do you think the best, your best option is for the road?
Well, personally, I would like to see VDOT approval on this commercial entrance. If we're going to have commercial operation. And I don't think that's up to, uh. Downey, make it so maybe.
Well.
Just my call, but if VDOT has that authority to make those declarations and, you know, make those approvals.
Yeah, they recommend, we ultimately would approve, and I, and I just think the rec, the, you know, what I'm reading as far as getting an engineer involved to get traffic counts, I don't still think that, if, you know, to me, the file analysis, do, do we think this road needs to be improved? We know roughly the traffic count, I, I, you know, we don't, it's sort of like the campground. Uh, we, we give it to them and, you know, VDOT's very clear that some, some counties don't even really ask. I, I ask, but I, I don't see where getting an engineer involved is going to really change the situation. We know roughly how many cars go back there, you know, what do we think needs to happen to that private drive? There's no veto authority by VDOT on this. Um, and they're very, very clear to me that you, you ultimately, the county control is the land use. So I guess what I'm trying to say here is this, um, getting engineers involved, I, I believe is going to, is going to not really add a lot of value to a very pretty, to a certain degree, a fairly simple, um, proposition with who, who maintains it? Is it good enough to, to handle the, the number of trips that we are pretty good handling on right now? So that's kind of where.
Illegal requirement is not for VDOT to approve this.
No, VDOT is not, does not approve our land use decisions here in the county. Right, right. Sure.
They not need, and the board does not need VDOT approval for this entrance for this commercial operation.
No, I mean, we, we ultimately, it's sort of like with the campground, we ultimately can make the decisions. They just recommend that we get an engineer to do traffic count on it. And I just don't think we need to, I, I think we can handle, uh, I think it's very basic that we have a, a use that has 20, 30 trips, um, a week and just use our best judgment. But the VDOT doesn't sign off and say, you, you know, they don't sell us, no, you can't approve this because we didn't, that, that's not, that's not the case.
The question is, do we need VDOT approval for this commercial entrance to this proposed automobile repair facility?
On a private drive, this is the, uh, Sean Field for Hurt Hollow.
I don't think we need it for art action. What the home, uh, property owner might need to do is a different question.
Okay, thank you. Then, um, the answer I'm hearing is we do not need.
Yeah, and I think. You following Pete?
What's that?
You there Pete?
Yeah, I'm here. I can barely hear the planning commission. I can hear you good.
Okay. I'll just repeat everything. Yeah, and just, just to be clear, we, it's not that we, you know, we, we, they advise us and, you know, they're, and I, I, our VDOT residency is very efficient and quick with getting back answers with this, and I've had good conversations with them. So it's not that we're saying we don't, but. Right, 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 right. No.
My, my other question is on the right of way. Uh, we have bounced back and forth on this, and I'd like to get Mr. Sean Gregg's input on it. Is this, uh, is there an issue with the right of way going up to this proposed automobile repair facility?
Yeah, and he, he repeated that to me and, and, and that's what we, I basically have said, but, um, you know, I, I, I have, we have looked at documents and I'm not a title examiner, but I've looked at a lot of deeds in my life and, um, you know, I won't comment more than that, but I don't think there's.
Questions from Mr. Webb from the planning commission? Mr. Gregor?
The application will maintain the entire length of the subject right of way leading to the garage. Does the right of way lead all the way up to the state maintained road?
Yes, it does. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Steve, um, I'm trying to see from the fourth picture here, how, how would you describe the entrance here? Is that, is this a cul-de-sac?
So it's, yeah, I think it kind of goes, Hurt Hollow kind of goes to the right a little bit and just sort of dips down. Well, maybe someone who's been back there more than me can, can talk about that, but I mean, it, it's slow moving through there. It's, it's not a fast road by any means. And you just sort of dip down and I'm not, to the right there, and maybe someone lives back or can tell me, I, that, that might just go back into a private drive as well. I, I could be wrong. Yeah. Right. Sure. Right. Well, no, that, to the right is the, I guess that's a continuation on the right of the state road. Is that right? Yeah, please. Yeah. Into state maintenance. Okay, okay. Right, right.
Mr. Chairman.
Talking about Hurt Hollow here.
Mr. Chairman. If I may, over here, sir, that, the question was about the, the road and I apologize. I've been up to the road, so I'll bring some clarity. There are two houses that go down to the right. So in the state maintenance, is that that cul-de-sac? And there are two residents beyond that. What's in question?
Jonathan, I am back on the meeting. This is Sean.
Thank you, sir.
I guess I didn't understand your, uh, question, Mr. Webber.
So I believe it was Mr. Carpenter or someone on that end asked about where the end of state maintenance is. That is the cul-de-sac. That is state of maintenance that you're looking at. There's a picture to the right and there are two houses beyond the driveway that goes to your right. What's in question tonight goes to the left up, up a hill. Just so you have an understanding of what's being accessed.
That, that, that's kind of where I was sort of getting right.
From the, from the proposed repair facility?
Yes.
It goes that way and about a, yeah.
The, nobody's happy.
Yeah.
Figuring I'm not hearing much of the discussion.
Do you want to make your comment now or wait to, to a motion or? Okay, okay. Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Any other questions for Mr. Webb? If you'd like to approach the podium with any comments that you might have. Please state your name for the record.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, my name is Laura Fields. Um, this is my first experience, uh, coming before the planning commission or the board of supervisors. So I wasn't exactly sure what to expect last week when we met. Um, and I, I didn't prepare anything last week, but I, I tried to do better this time. And I do have something I'd like to read if that's all right. Not, not too long.
Please proceed.
Uh, I just wanted to say thank you to those members that came up to the house, um, to talk with us and to look at the shop. Um, I appreciate that. Um, to give a little background, uh, my husband Sean is an experienced mechanic and he's always wanted to own his own business. Um, and that's kind of been his plan for a long time. Um, we have owned the property since 2001 and built a house there, um, which we would have had to go through zoning and right of way issues at that time, which were addressed and put to bed. Um, we also, as you know, built a garage, but we built it in 2006, um, a detached garage, and we got a building permit and a certificate of occupancy at that time. We have added on to it since then, but just so you know, we, we followed the rules then. Um, and, and we're trying to do that now. Um, Sean has worked off and on as a sole proprietor in that shop since 2007. Um, we haven't had any problems or complaints since then. Um, I also want to assure the board that we did not try to, uh, go around the rules or, um, try to hide. Um, we asked if we needed a business license before we, before Sean started working full time and we were told that, that is not required. So I kind of checked that box off and moved on to the next item, which was to register with the state corporation commission, which I did, um, and the chamber of commerce. I also have been paying sales tax monthly, um, as required. Um, we've been paying, uh, personal, business personal property taxes on Sean's tools and his air compressor for years. So we, we were trying to follow the rules and, um, we just simply did not know that we needed a special zoning permit for him to be self-employed on our own property in a building that was over 10 years old. Um, now that we know that, we are fully willing to comply with whatever we need to do. I have contacted, um, design option and Chuck Stevenson to certify the building. Um, and also Dennis Brown of Culpeper Engineering to, to help with the, that will be required. Um, and, and I feel confident that we can, can meet those requirements. The issue that keeps coming up and that was brought up last weekend was about the shared right of way. Um, like I said, we haven't had any problems with that since, as we moved there. So I was surprised that it came up again. Um, and some of the, the comments that were made were simply not true. Um, and I, I tried to address those privately by just sending you all, um, the documentation instead of calling them out in a public forum. Um, but now that they've been brought up again, um, I feel I should address them. Um, I, I have title insurance that I purchased when I got the property that we searched this in and, um, they have assured me that I'm insured for the right of the u, use of the road. Um, if that's not enough evidence for my neighbors, um, there were at least two other houses on my property before I moved there. Um, Ed Hughes, who was a banker in Madison for many years, built a log cabin there and the driveway served on that log cabin. Um, and there was a, um, a plat done of that in 1976 showing the current driveway, which I provided to you all. Um, the power line brought in power to Ed Hughes's cabin in 1984 along the same road. Um, and even before that, there is a foundation, a stone foundation and a hearth of a house that was there probably in the 1920s. So in my mind, I, I don't think we need to debate the fact that the road has been there for a very long time and it served my property. Um, it was pretty discouraging to hear that, uh, my neighbors have suggested there's another way for me to get to my property. If that was the case, I would be happy to do so, but there's no documentation showing that. Um, I have looked and my title insurance company has confirmed that. Um, one of the other complaints that they had was about the bus and the bus does not come down the private driveway, just so that you know, it stops at the cul-de-sac and turns around. Um, my granddaughter gets off the bus there every day and we haven't had any problems with that. Um, not a high volume traffic road. Um, just so that you get an understanding, the type of work that Sean does is, it's time consuming and it can take multiple days for one job. So that just does not lead to a large volume of traffic. Um, he does have parts delivered to him pretty much daily. Um, but there's only so much work that one person can do in one day. And we have no other employees. He is the only one working. Um, and I, I think he's pretty satisfied with to keep it that way. Not interested in expanding. Um, I've always tried to get along with my neighbors and I'm certainly willing to do that now. Um, I'm happy to make improvements to the road if, if necessary and if they're willing to, to make specific suggestions, although they have not made any. Um.
Ms. Fields?
Yes. Okay. Well, I, I just thought that if that, if that was an issue with the right of way, um, I, I'm happy to, if we put restrictions on that, I'm happy to address them. Um, we haven't gotten any complaints about traffic from our other neighbors, um, who, most of them have brought work to Sean in the past six months. Um, I guess in summary, Sean's a hard worker and he just wants to earn a living on, on our own property. I'm happy to comply. Um, the shop would generate tax revenue for the county and it supports other businesses like NAPA, Fishers and Ford, who has, he has accounts with. Um, and I think that, you know, the board has a decision to make about how they want to support small businesses in Madison. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are you, uh, do you have any problem with these proposed, uh, conditions?
Um, I haven't seen them before today. I was not, um, I, I knew about the building and this, the subject. I was not aware of the VDOT issue until you all just start, started discussing.
You have not seen this proposed condition?
No, I just got it that, tonight.
I believe one, uh,
Yes, sir. No, I have no objection to that.
Yeah, it's part of the planning commission from Ms. Fields. Appreciate it. Are there anyone in the audience who would like to come up and comment on this application?
Please, Dwayne Veely, I manage the NAPA here in Cal, uh, Madison, excuse me. Um, I have no problem with just, we, at a certain time, that's not an issue either, as far as delivering parts. Um, we do not go up there maybe five, six, seven times a week because like, as it says, jobs take a long time to get the, uh, jobs done. And any recommendations you need from me, you know, as being a business here in Madison, let me know. All right?
I asked that we just stick to the pertinent part here.
Amy Hurst. I know many of you have seen the driveway. I know it's not suitable for this type of business. The road is a one lane, private drive with a dangerous hill and blind spot. So trucks, rollback trucks, and the increased traffic is putting my family and others at risk for an accident, along with the entrance of the driveway being the bus stop and turnaround for six to seven children. This area already has four driveways and seven families accessing it without adding more traffic. I feel it will be an adverse effect on our property value to share a private driveway with a commercial business. The codes in 4142B, C and G seem to address the issues. A 50-foot right of way was to serve three properties as stated on my deed. It did not include the field's property. Our driveway is in a different location on the field's deed than on the field's deed. We have no problem with them running a business, actually their second business, if they want to revive the right of way that runs into the back of the parcel where the business is located. This would benefit their business and solve the issues. I have provided copies of our deed and other paperwork to show that we do not share right of way with the field or previous owners. I included pictures of the driveway for everyone to view as well. Mr. Webb should have all the information. We are aware of the petitions going around and hope that that will not sway the votes of the board because other people have no interest or concern for the safety and well-being of my children or family. And I believe other neighbors have contacted Mr. Webb against this business because they could not attend tonight. Thank you, Chris.
Joe Hurst, that the, uh, there is another right of way or, or was a right of way to the, to the property that's coming out, which comes around by the power line at the end of the driveway and comes around and enters down there by their, their garage down the way. You know, they can, I'm sure, use that if they wanted to. The driveway that they're using, they, they, it's always been there. The driveway was put in by me and my wife in 1999. It was a path up through there, you know, several different roads through there, but this was not a road. And I had it put in when we got our right of way. It served the three parcels and that's not one of them. I just wanted to make it clear. I'm not, like I say, I'm not against their business. I'm not against them or anything like that. But the, the amount of traffic on that little driveway, it's, it's a lot. And if they could access the property from the other direction or be right there at it would be beneficial to everybody. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Very much. Anybody else in the audience who'd like to contribute, comment?
Good evening. My name is Nita.
Good evening, my name is Nita Collier and I'm just here to support Laura and Sean Fields. We use their shop, my husband and I, Scott and I use their shop several times. In fact, he's the exclusive person that works on my husband's truck. And I just wanted to say that he provides exceptional customer service, quality work, reasonable cost. We went to a dealership, we would probably pay triple what we pay Sean. And he's honest and he doesn't try to sell us something we don't need. So I just wanted to support, say that. He is, like I said, he's our exclusive mechanic, so he does all of our work.
Good evening, my name is Shelby Woodward and I am here in support of my father Sean Field. My father started his own business at home with the goal to provide for himself and his family while also giving to, giving the community a trustworthy auto mechanic shop. He offers an alternate, alternative to the expensive shops or dealerships. He treats people fairly with the price they can afford and don't try to sell them something they don't need. He has over 25 years of experience in education, he can fix anything from Xera transmission to water pumps on a shaggy grooves and even broken valves on a Ford Power Stroke. I've brought him a few challenges over the years. Two of the complaints regarding the right of way to the garage with the safety of the bus stop and the width of the road in regards to passing. In 20 years of living and visiting in my parents' home, there has never been an issue of pulling off to the side of the driveway to let undercar pass. Again, it's not, it's not an issue. In regards to the safety of the bus stop, my dad waits for my daughter every day at the theme bus stop after school along with the other neighbors and it hasn't happened. When I was growing up, my dad told me the importance of having a strong work ethic. If you want something, then you have to work for it and don't expect somebody else to do it to you. He has built a reputation as an honest, hard-working and generous person, always willing to help out a friend or family member, even though he has faced many struggles himself. He is a good man trying to earn an honest living from his Madison County home.
What else? What else? Everybody, whoever's Hurst. Got a portable microphone?
I bought that land in 72. It was never no driveway up, I never. And I was raised and born in a half a mile of where he lives, where my aunt lived and four black families lived there. The right of way goes from his garage down on, it's Robinson probably, and down on Bert Hollow Road after 642. I've seen him drive horses and everything up there. Only path they ever seen is my wife lived there at the cave place, the last place I bought. She's 77 years old. She didn't go lying, I don't lie. There never was no driveway, the only path was a possible problem when I come over there to see her when she's my girlfriend at night. That's the only path that I've been through there. And if, if according to law, if that's a private driveway, four, it's four on that right of ways out of there now. And talking about no traffic, no transit, they come out of there. One of them come out Sunday morning, might even run into me. Come out of there like the highway, it's 18 cars coming on that bus turnaround every day. Nothing, they have no business over there. The right of ways, all they have to do is open it up and cost nothing, hardly. We built his garage. I ain't against him working, but I've worked on my life and worked for the county seven, eight years and I never have asked him for nothing. I like to make the right decision.
Hello, I'm Rod Sharp, friend of Laura and Sean's and I'm here to support them. I've actually been going, I've gotten to know Sean and Laura for probably the past four years pretty, pretty well and I've been going up and down their driveway into their shop, probably at least twice, three times a week and never once had anybody on the road at different times that I've been up and down the road there. I think it's been pretty much stated that Laura has provided everybody with the deed, their property, been there since 2002, using the road, they had a right of way to it, so this isn't a right of way issue, this is an issue to get the special implement advantage of them to run the business. As far as all the comments and statements about the right of way, I'm not sure what they want, want them to do. They cannot be able to get to their house. I mean, it's, obviously they have the right of way, they've had it since 2002, it's been established since 1972. So they comment saying there's no road or, or no gravel or no, nothing up there, it's just ridiculous, so I just want to protect the board to make the right decision and in favor of this.
All right, any other questions from the Planning Commission, comments? I'd like to do a little matter. About going with what the division ordinance is. He says many of those roads that are not subject to any minimum construction standards, these roads presently, then a public safety risk, how samples may not be able to travel poorly maintained private roads. One might argue that this is part of a caveat emptor environment where, and that this is the responsibility of the citizens to determine whether they live on a road that is poorly maintained. We have learned from some neighbors that most of them look to kind of fix what is essentially a private problem. Any other people here to vote on this? Any other comments from the Planning Commission?
Pete wants to say something?
Go ahead, Pete.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes. I guess Mike, one of the things I want to say is, I kind of support Ligon's idea of what the BDOT really do here. I mean, it's kind of cut and dry what's there. I rode up there and visually looked at the place like most of you guys did. The road going up to there is probably one of the better state roads in Madison County. The business is hidden, so you don't know it's there. And I don't know, we can ask Sean, but I don't think that we have too much jurisdiction on that private drive. That's an ease, but, and when those people decided they want to build up there, they went to the zoning office and Betty looked at to see if there was an easement or a right of way before she would issue them a building permit. So Betty felt like that it was a true right of way or a true easement there, or she would have never let the county issue a building permit, so, no, I, I think this is a good little business for the county and we need more block shops that can help people out in the county, especially in this day and age. Thank you.
Public? Not? Commission wish to do with this? Are there recommendations to the board? Apparently they do not need BDOT approval and the driveway appears to be a civil matter according to the county attorney. And that would not be planning commission's concern in their recommendation, if I understand what has been said. So, have you heard that? Got a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just...
You need a motion, Ligon?
Yeah, yeah, we need a motion, sure.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I'm looking at the case number SU-09-21-11, he recommended to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
Have a motion, a second? Yeah, I guess Pete, would it be okay to make a friendly amendment to your motion to include the six conditions that were stated?
That you read, yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I would be willing to put that in the motion, the conditions that you read.
Okay.
You may want to ask Sean Gregg if Pete Elliott is allowed to make a motion since he's joining us by phone and it didn't pass any kind of, what stuff? There was a, there was a mo, emergency motion that could be passed, you may want to ask Sean Gregg, he's on the phone with you.
Okay, what, what is the particular...
Before he can vote or make a motion, so this doesn't come back in front of you.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
Let me take him a second, come off of mute.
Well, play, I don't, I don't, I, I'm trying to be, hang on, let me, my phone says that I am, okay. All right, here we, here we are, I think I may have been on mute.
Since there is a question of whether or not this...
I can hear, I can hear you now and I've got the meeting on the other line, so we're, we're doing what we can. I just want to make sure I understand, is it an emergency motion or is it just an amendment to the motion? Well, what we have is Pete is joining us virtually and we know, you know, we had the, a year ago, the state, you know, allowed people to virtually attend, he's on speaker like you are, Sean, so I guess the question is, can he make the motion, quote unquote, virtually? Yes, he can, yes, he can make, he can make the motion virtually, if that's the question. To amplify the point and something for the board to consider, you know, or for the commission to consider rather, is, you know, there apparently is some question about which right of way we are talking about. The Fields' sent us information that seemed to indicate that this was the only right of way to their property. I believe Mr. Webb has confirmed that to be the case, but that is somewhat of a variance with the information we have heard at the public hearing. A possible approach to take to this would be for the, for the board to table it to the next meeting, or for the planning commission to recommend approval and then for the board to table final approval until we can do one of two things, either get a surveyor out there to take a look at it, which I think is probably what we'll need to do, or the alternative is just confirm the title report. I mean, I, I looked at the information the Fields' sent me and I feel confident that they certainly have a right of way. What I don't know the answer to, however, is whether the right of way that is shown on their survey is in fact the, the right of way that they are using. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
So where's the map?
Okay. All right, I think we can take it from there, Mr. Gregg. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we, there would still be an issue, if I understand. You have the motion made, it is, is still standing, we have a second. Any comments from the Planning Commission? Make them? Oh, okay, I thought you had something to say? All right. The motion is, that Planning Commission make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for approval based on these conditions. Any other comments from the Planning Commission? Not, can I get a motion?
You have the motion, you have a second, we'll just get a vote, I guess, now. That's correct.
Okay, well, I got, I'm sorry, with all this motion going on, I'm losing track where we are. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Thank you very much.
And Pete, just to clarify, Pete, you're, you're in favor, is that I vote for you, Pete?
I am in favor.
Okay, okay.
Next case on the agenda. This case number, 08-21-07, this is...
Yes.
Case number RZ-09-21-12, Jamesville and Juneville, Madison LLC, Tina Weaver, has submitted an applicant rezone roughly 91.89 acres, which is split zone at present, part of it is act, portion of it is general business. Yeah, voluntarily eliminating all by right M1 uses. Rezone applicants have indicated subsequent applications would be submitted requesting a zoning text amendment and a special use permit in order to develop a solar farm known as a commercial solar energy facility on the subject parcel. Potential application, applications would also require public hearing. The subject parcel does not currently contain a postal address that is located on South Seminole Trail, which is Route 29, and it joins the Yoder's Country Market. The parcel is identified in the Mass County Tax Map as Tax Map Number 48-12C. A lot of discussion, things been in the newspaper, of course, a lot of people know what's going on with this potential rezoning application. Mr. Webb, would you have anything you would like to add to that?
Oh, sure, a few things. So yes, this is something that I know I've been in contact with Mr. Beal and the applicants for at least six months now and they've been, you know, discussing their, their proposal. I now, I guess with the Plan Commission to some extent with the board for three or four months, so we've, we've seen the proposal, we, you know, I know a couple of years ago, a little over two years ago before, I think it was, before I started with Madison, the Plan Commission Board adopted a solar ordinance supplemental regulations and put solar as a special use in M1 industrial district. And I've said before, the solar applications have been everywhere in the state, we've kind of, I guess it's our turn. I think it was told to me that there, and I don't know if I can really verify this number, but there are 6,000 projects, these are renewable projects, renewable energy, so solar obviously would be the, would be probably the principal application, so you have, that have been approved, in the process of some sort of, of, of a hearing or being proposed, in the future of being proposed, are the number 6,000s, but seems like a lot, but I do know, there's really doesn't seem to be a county or a community where they haven't had this, this hearing, you know, hearings or some sort of conversation about solar. And just the background, and I did, and the reason why, and I'll just sort of look at part of my report, is that in 2020, the Virginia Legislature passed the Virginia Clean Economy Act, which promotes energy efficiency, sets a schedule for closing nearly all the state's possible power field plants. I think coal fire have to be all closed by 2024 in the state. And requires electories to come from 100% renewable sources. The biggest utility in the company, in the, in the, in the state, Dominion, I think it's 2035, has to be 100% renewable. Don't believe those requirements are, are for the co-ops yet. But the co-ops, everyone is looking to diversify their energy portfolio. I did go on their website for REC and kind of look at, you know, what their current portfolio of energy, and you can see, most of it's purchased. So they purchase a lot from, I don't know, other, other parts of the grid, you know, I, I don't know what, what the source of that energy is, but you can see that, you know, on their, what's provided on their website right now, it looks like wind, solar and, and landfill, and landfill gas is a pretty small percentage. So what that's done is put, I don't want to call it pressure, but it's put a lot of applications and before boards all over the state for these proposals. And solar generally, you know, I, I... And solar, uh, generally, um, you know, I, I, you know, I personally, just from a personal perspective, you know, support renewable energy, think it's a great idea, but also know that, uh, that it's not, it's not sightly, and it, and it can have some, some negative repercussions if not sighted properly. Just sort of reading some of my notes here, you know, you did discuss, they've been very upfront, the applicants, that this rezoning, uh, were to be, if this property would be rezoned, that they would then be seeking a special use permit. They've also been very upfront that in order to really make the project work, they would need a, a buffer to be reduced, the, and that would be done by some sort of amendment, whether it comes from a request from the applicant or the county. And I know that the subcommittee has talked about this. Just for this twelve to fifteen, uh, megawatt project, just from my research, about a megawatt can the power, superpower needs about, about two hundred homes. And again, I'm just sort of generally going through my notes here. And I will say one thing, is I did receive a proffer letter from the applicants, one of the concerns, if it is rezoned to M1, you know, if they kind of decide they want to abandon the solar, and, you know, always, always say truck stop, they wanted to go for a truck stop, uh, that would not be allowable. I'll just read the proffer letter regarding our, our request to rezon forty-eight, twelve, C. We request such rezoning for a singular and sole purpose of operating a solar power electric generating plant to provide electricity for the exclusive use of Rapapahannik Electric Commission. I would read that simply to say that they will not use this, and cannot use this, unless they come back before these bodies and request that it be included, truck stop. So, uh, just, I think that's a good thing to have in place, they have been agreeable with that. As far as the location, um, of the proposed solar, you know, is this an ideal location? I have heard people say, I think people in the commission have said, it's a good location because it's close to a busy highway and a business, and that sort of makes sense, and maybe being further out in the country, maybe, maybe somewhere where you could see it from the, from the mount, from, uh, the park or something like that. I think that, I sort of follow that logic, and understand that, but then some people, I've, I've read comments and, and heard people say, well, it's not a good location because you can see it on the highway and it's near business. So it really just depends on your perspective. I, I do believe that the environmental has provided a very nice map here. Um, this, it's unquestionable. Now, we do know that it would require a pretty significant buffer, fencing, uh, landscaping, so at sort of eye level, you probably wouldn't be able to see it. We visited, I know, they visited one in Buckingham, you know, this hundred acres is kind of on the smaller side, and I think that when you created the ordinance a few years ago, this kind of explained to me that you really thought they were going to be much larger proposals, and that's one of the reasons why you had the three-hundred-foot setback, but it, it will, no question, um, you know, again, at eye level, maybe, you won't see it with the buffering, but I think this is a good map, it will be visible, and it's, it's hard to, for me to talk to this gentleman here that lives right next to it, and, you know, it's, it's, yes, I support, you know, personally, I think that the renewable energy is a great thing, and I, I ride by solar panels, I, I kind of, I don't know, it kind of gives me a good feeling that, um, that they're generating energy from the sun, I think it's, it's, it's a great thing, and it's, it's, it's something that we're going to see more of, uh, but it, it definitely, and as this map shows, it, it's going to have some, some view, you know, uh, issue, you know, I guess they call view shed, uh, it's going to, you know, it's, it's not pretty. So I think that is a, a very important point to, to look at in, in your considerations, um, and also, if you are inclined to improve this, um, and we talked about this after the hearing, but, you know, the, the applicants have been very clear that they're still, uh, at least that the, the folks that they're leasing this to are still in negotiation with REC. You know, when I told them to apply, I said, you know, basically, when, when you're ready, apply. I, I don't know when they're ready, but I think they anticipated they would be finalized their negotiations with REC, that they can tell us the kind of the status of that. Otherwise, uh, you know, I did put a big, big blurb in there about the taxation, part of the state's, um, uh, you know, push for renewable energy is they've also added incentives for localities to tax these, and, uh, it, it is no question, talking to Brian Daniel, Commissioner Revenue, there's a couple of different methods in which a project like this can be taxed, um, and, you know, it, it would either be the machinery tools tax or that fourteen-hundred-dollar-a-megawatt tax. So, uh, it is definitely, when you look at the services that you would provide to a solar site, which pretty much few, none, it is a, it is a fairly, uh, productive property as far as tax generation. I don't think that's the only consideration the planning commission or board wants to make, I mean, it, uh, it's not going to break the budget or, you know, but it is to note that it is a fairly passive use that does generate, um, a, a fair amount of tax revenue over the course of time. Um, other than that, um, again, I've been knee-deep in kind of understanding, I knew nothing about solar panels, I'd avoided these hearings in other places, and so the last few months, I've learned a lot, it's been interesting. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer your questions now.
Any questions from the planning commission? This is strictly a rezoning of property with the intent that the parties will, uh, attempt to establish a large-scale solar facility over there. Any questions from Mr. Webb? Ten.
I thought, to hear from the applicants, are they ready to proceed, or have they gotten all the stuff done that they wanted? Because the rollback taxes...
Well, my belief is you have not, is that the REC, and maybe you can talk a little, you know, why don't you talk about, yeah, okay. Uh, I, I'll just give you what, what, how I believe it could work. Just assuming they have not, at least they had not a few days, so they had everything, square with REC. I would, I would recommend the planning commission just look at this, take the, take the deal with REC and put it to aside, and think about this more strictly a land use decision, um, and, and make a vote to, to send it to the board, up or down? And I, and I think I've, I've written this in my report. And then at the board, if the board is, is inclined to table it because they haven't, don't have everything in order, then that would maybe a better place for it, so, that's... Yeah.
And as far as the money goes, from my standpoint, that is not a large consideration. It's other issues that we have to, uh, think about in our recommendations.
Uh, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you can hear me, this is Sean Gregg again.
If not, see applicant?
Um, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Just to make, make ourselves available for questions, so...
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
I've been doing this twice with the planning commission, so I probably won't do a slide. Lit, your name for the record?
Uh, Mark Tippett, I'm the Chief Development Officer for Yaro Tech, we're the solar development company that is, uh, proposing to, to work with Beals and the Weavers on this project. Uh, I've been working with them for a couple of years now. We're, um, we're developing projects in, uh, Virginia, and Ohio, and North Carolina. And I just wanted to make myself available because there are a lot of questions that seem to, uh, surround kind of the visual impact, and one of the things that, uh, we didn't mention was, the solar ordinance actually requires us to, to put in a tree barrier, so in addition to the, to the setback, um, there, there's already, it, it's a little tough to see from the, from that, from that, that overhead view, but there is, uh, you know, a good three-quarters of the project that already is surrounded by just natural trees, including both sides of twenty-nine. So the project side of twenty-nine, uh, over half of that frontage has natural trees, and then there's a, a tree line on the other side for, you know, landowners on the other side, but, um, but we've proposed, uh, a, a tree barrier all along the, the twenty-nine frontage, and then, uh, we spoke into, uh, to the owner of Yoder's Market, who's not opposed to the project, um, a- as long as we also commit to putting a tree barrier around his business, which, which we would, of course, do. So, um, other than that, uh, I just wanted to, you know, make myself available if there were any questions about the project and the technology. Another, another complaint or, uh, objection that we hear a lot is that these type of projects take land out of, um, you know, they kind of permanently remove the land for agricultural use. This is probably about the easiest development to reverse from a, from a land use perspective. The solar panels are mounted on, they're steel I-beams that are driven without any concrete, and, and there's no gravel in the foundations, so it's just a pedestal that, that goes in the ground. We have a recommendation bond that's part of our contract, that legally and financially requires us to completely restore the land, which is easy to do, because all we do is we just, we just pick those pedestals out, and, um, because there's no, uh, you know, because there's no emissions, you know, there, there's kind of nothing left but just raw land. So other than that, if there were any other questions, uh, I'm available to answer them.
Okay, I think there may be some more questions. I would like to also throw in that, is that two minutes enough to finish them to this? One of them is from the environmental council, and...
Okay.
Comments from the audience, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
From planning question?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, while.
You can't hear me? Mr. Chairman?
I'm looking at the picture here, and there's, there seems to be some area at the back of the property where there's no tree line. Are you planning to put some, a tree barrier there, too?
Yes, we'll, we'll install a tree, a tree barrier, you know, any place that's required by the ordinance, and quite frankly, any place that is requested of us.
I appear, I mean, I'm on the telephone, and I appear to be, uh, okay. I mean, I, I can hear everything y'all are saying. Okay. Okay. Okay, all right, I'll jump in in just a second.
And also, on the same lines, there are some streams on that property, what kind of stream protection is involved in this?
So, if you, if you look at the, um, if you look at the, the site layout, you'll see that there are exclusion zones, those are, those are wetlands. So, so, uh, there are two reasons why we stay away from water, one of them's legal, so, you know, we have to do FEMA floodplain and, um, you know, wetlands inventory, so anything that's kind of designated as either wetlands or hundred-year floodplain, uh, we, we can't by law, uh, build on, but, but then also, um, i- it's just not prudent to build on them from a, from a purely, uh, construction perspective. So, so we're not building, uh, on, you know, a- anywhere that's wet. Your, your first question was, uh, ground disturbance, uh, these projects are not really financially viable if we have to do much groundwork, so we don't anticipate, we don't anticipate grading or changing the terrain at all. Yes, sir.
Uh, just for the record, would you clarify how many of the ninety acres in this? Would you be using, that you anticipate using for, I think maybe that would clarify.
Yes, ma'am, uh, so, so it's, it's, uh... Because the, some of the exclusion areas are kind of inside the project, you can't really tell the landowner for that, uh, because they can't get to that or use that, so, so it's, uh, it's everything kind of inside, uh, the buffer zone, so, so the majority of the, the majority of the land, you know, minus the, the buffer zone.
My question refers to the fact that at one point in time, I think we probably have it written somewhere, that actually there would be panels on about, is it forty-some acres, fifty-some acres, what did that mean?
Yeah, that, that was, uh, I think we were giving a demonstration of what, uh, if, if we had, if, if we were, if we built a project hypothetically with the three-hundred-foot setback, it, it kind of reduced really significantly the amount of, of area that would be left, and, and, uh, and, and it would take it down to a size that, that wouldn't be viable.
And the other question, obviously, the number of panels you put on that land, uh, is affected by the amount of power, solar power that you will, that REC can accept with that transmission line?
Yes, ma'am.
And you don't have that yet, we don't know?
We, we do, yes, that, 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 we, we actually knew that by the last planning meeting, and that, and that actually went, uh, one of the points that Mr. Webb was making. We, we are ready to go, as far as REC is, is concerned. Um, it's, it'll, it's probably going to be closer to twelve. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, so, so we have worked with, um, the REC Planning Engineering, and they've given us kind of a, an engineering, um, guideline, which is specific to that, uh, distribution line, and, and really said we can't go over kind of a maximum of, of twelve megawatts.
Anyone else in the planning commission?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of points I would like to get some clarification about. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, uh, that's a, a great question. Finding sites that meet all of the criteria, uh, all of the technical criteria for a project like this is extremely difficult. I think Madison County has two-hundred-and-one-thousand acres total, roughly, um, there are very, very few, few locations that, that would, uh, technically... You know, satisfy the, what's needed for, for, for projects like this. I mean, they, they need to be, you know, they need to be close to a substation, they need to be close to the transmission line, so it's not like just any piece of land, uh, you know, will, will work. This is probably, um, uh, this is probably the smallest piece of land where a utility-scale solar project could financially be constructed.
But, I mean, my connection's still good, I mean...
Um, there are, there's, there's three that we've been looking at, but the one that's right here is, yeah, yes, that's right. Right.
A lot of the, uh, questions that have been asked, a lot of those will be addressed, again, with the special use permit application is filed, and I guess it doesn't hurt to go over some of those at this particular time. Any other questions from the planning commission?
Yeah, I can hear you.
One, one more general point, uh, that I'd like to make, that, that kind of is to your, the point you just made. The, the num- I, I don't know if you've got the slide that has the list of, of permits and, and requirements, I mean, the amount of stuff that's required by us, both at the local level and at the state level, is enormous. So there, there are all kinds of questions about what happens with stormwater, um, DOT, you know, historical registry, uh, environmental, I mean, it's, it's, it's over, you know, it's, it's twelve to, to fifteen different permits and approvals. We still, we still have all of that in front of us, so, uh, I think the, the zoning request just, kind of just gets us to almost step one.
Okay. I have several questions for the applicant, mostly related to the consequences of the planning commission. Okay.
Okay. I have, I have just a few questions for the applicant with regard to the ramifications of the planning commission, and ultimately, the board of supervisors moving forward on this. commission and ultimately the board of supervisors moving forward on this. The first question relates to rollback taxes. If this upzoning is approved, the rollback taxes, which I understand are in excess of fifty thousand dollars, would be triggered. And obviously, we are not hearing the information regarding the special use permit, you know, certainly during this public hearing. I just want to make sure that the landowner is aware of this ramification in the event of the upzoning.
We so so I'm Mark, I'm representing the developer. We have this, we've been made aware of this from the landowner's perspective. As a developer, we we pay the rollback taxes.
Okay, and I I heard that answer. And then the next question is, where do negotiations with R E C currently stand?
Where the the. Hopefully, if if we get, you know, kind of past this step, then the very next thing that we do is we make a formal application. It's an interconnection application. And that starts the that starts the the technical feasibility with with the utility. We're we're, you know, we're we're a little bit experienced with this, so that's why we spent time with the utility prior to all of this, you know, to know that that we were going into technically a situation, you know, where where R E C is going to be able to accommodate this project. But but if if we get kind of to step one, then the very next thing that we will do, which we're ready to do now, is is submit the the formal application for interconnection. And and really, from a from a utility perspective, that that's that's pretty much the whole ball of wax with the with the with the negotiation. It is it is merely a technical exercise where they tell us the technical feasibility and the cost to interconnect to their to their grid.
And if those negotiations pop down, do you indemnify the landowner for the payment of the rollback taxes?
We we honestly haven't, we haven't gotten that far.
Those are my questions at this point. Thank you.
What percentage of solar energy will help Madison County? Do you know that answer?
This project is actually, this is very small in in comparison to the total electricity usage for the county. You know, so it's it's probably going to be on the order of of five percent or less. One thing, though, that maybe is related to that, and and it's it there, it's addressed in the ordinance and we also get questions about it, is where does all this electricity go? Electricity is like water. If you put it into a pipe, it goes out where every place that takes it out first. So because this is a relatively small project, I know it's not small from the county's perspective and certainly it might not be small from some neighbor's perspective, but in terms of utility-scale projects, it's a very small one. We've got eight projects we're working on right now. This is the smallest one. All these, all this electricity is going to be consumed before it gets out of the county. It doesn't, it doesn't get exported out.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm doing a little quick math in my head. The the question was if if the state-level mandate, which which, by the way, you know, there are also misconceptions about what the Clean Energy Act says. The Clean Energy Act does not mandate that that utilities, they can't force the utilities. It's it's a it's a recommendation and it's a set of policies that encourages renewable. But but the reason why these hearings are so important is the most important approval that we can get is at the county level. And it's folks just like you who make those decisions. If 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 three percent of the landmass of Virginia, two to three percent, got put in panels, that would probably support about fifty percent of all the electricity that's used in the state. It's a, so right now, right now in Virginia, and the six thousand project is probably about right and growing. Right now, of the developed land in Virginia, in other words, land with something on it other than a crop, of the developed land in Virginia, solar is less than one percent of the developed land. So so, you know, there there is a lot of talk about it and there are a lot of projects. But, you know, when you drive from here to there, you don't see a lot of them because it's still very, very small percentage of the landmass. I think that was the question that that she asked here. Yeah, that was that diagram there. It's it's about eighty percent of the of the land. That that that's that's the that's the that's the proposed layout. I do. Hey, you hear everything?
I hear everything I need to hear.
We got you.
I've already introduced myself. My name's Alan Nichols. My wife and I own the property to the south of the proposed development here. And bear with me just a second here. Want to take a minute. Have not had nearly enough time to prepare to rebut this proposed change. The notification was just sent out before the workshop a couple of weeks ago. So while I could be more eloquent in doing this, I'm just going to get right down to it. Joe of hands, everyone familiar with the the Madison County vision statement? I'm assuming all of you should be, right? All right, so I'm gonna I'm gonna read a quick. Comprehensive plan and the vision statement within. Yes, sir, you with me? All right, so I'm gonna read a quick segment of it here. I'll be quick, but here it is, I think it's important. Our vision statement for Madison County. As residents of Madison County, we value and wish to preserve the county's scenic beauty, rural environment, farms and forests, friendly atmosphere, balanced economy, and good schools. We also recognize the need for economic growth, improved internet service and public utilities, modest population growth, expanded sources of public revenues. Goals, implementation strategies presented in this comprehensive plan are designed to enable the county to realize this vision. So putting a power plant right next to our schools on farmland, I mean, we keep calling it a solar farm, but let's talk call it what it is, it's a power plant. And we're going to change the zoning to industrial here is what's been proposed. You know, how does that follow our vision statement of preserving the scenic beauty and farms and forests of our county? I don't see where it does, and I don't see how you can argue that it does. The next thing, and the first goal on your implementation strategy is to protect the natural beauty and rural character of our county. We're not some technical, you know, innovators here. And, you know, for the record, I'm not I'm not opposed to solar production going in place, but it belongs on impervious surfaces, belongs on roofs, over parking lots, not over our farmland. I think it's important, I mean, we're here to talk about the zoning this evening. I think I want to mention here some of the the implications of changing the zoning to M1. If the commission, if it does change the zoning, and I've pulled the industrial limited M1 zoning off of the county's website, or read just a sentence here right off the top of it. It's zoned M1. This district is established to permit certain light-to-medium industrial uses near a labor supply for which satisfactory evidence is presented that such uses, either by right or special units use permit, here's the key statement, will not adversely affect any contiguous district by reason of odor, glare, smoke, dust, vibration, noise, sight, or contamination of water, air, and land. This is what the proposed zoning is that you guys are getting ready to vote on. You vote on this, the fellows that are getting ready to put the solar in here, these are the rules, they cannot adversely affect the neighbors. Because you don't have any other M1 zoning there, the zoning around it is different. So they will be, they will meet the definition of contiguous zoning. Here's your view shed. We've all looked at it. All of the contiguous areas, the proposed changed parcel, will be adversely impacted against your rules. This is what we made. The rules are here for everyone to follow. So if the zoning changes, unless we change the next rule, they can't build their solar facility anyway, are the rules that are already here. And then we're proposing to accommodate this request, that we change another rule to go and alter the setbacks so it can be productive. So now we have a site that's going to adversely impact the neighbors based on the definitions that are in the zoning that we want to rezone to. And we're going to change the setback rules again, make it economically viable. It sounds to me an awful lot like the highest investment use of this property, even an M1 zoning, is something else. It's not viable for them to do this. Additionally, and I do have it here in front of me, but the gentleman earlier stated that eighty percent of the lot was going to be covered in solar panels. Okay, well, if eighty percent of the lot is covered in solar panels, they're going to have a parking lot in there, I assume, somewhere to go and pull the cars off the road, maybe an accessory structure or two. The maximum percentage of lot coverage for M1 zoning, eighty percent. So they're going to have to keep reducing their solar panels, making it even less viable in order to make this happen. So how many of these things are we going to bend over backwards to make this happen? I also feel like I should mention that while I'm all for our folks here and our small businesses getting going and doing their thing, I think that's great. The folks that are really adamant in developing this live somewhere else. They live in Williamsburg. They're not interested in what it looks like or how when they take their school kids to school every day, they have to drive past a power plant. Or when you visit Yoder's, you go in there and get your lunch or pick up groceries, it's got to look at there. And I know the gentleman says that there's going to be trees there. How many times have you gone past a place that's, you know, an industrial use or some kind of a facility where they planted trees? Half of them are brown, fallen over, it don't get maintained. There's a lot more issues here. It's not nearly as simple, and I mean, a quick answer off the cuff here just doesn't cut it. The site isn't viable for what they want to do. The, you know, and I feel like there are other sites that are better suited for this. We changed this to industrial here, and the and it goes the wrong way. Solar company can't make it viable. Now we've got M1 zoning. We're concerned about the, you know, the landowner's well-being, they'll pay their taxes, they're going to want to do something with it. So then we're going to be right back here before this committee, and they're going to say, okay, well, now we know that we said we were going to do only the solar, that's all we wanted to do, but now it's M1 zoning, the solar company doesn't want to do it, now we want to do something else. And so we had something that was perfectly zoned for what it is, it's A1 B1. You can get other destination businesses that help our economy, places like Yoder's, restaurants and businesses, go right along there, they got perfect road frontage on twenty-nine, easement for access through Yoder's. You know, there's all kinds of other options for us to do when there's not a lot of other, you know, places to do it to benefit our community. Putting solar here is a waste, and the zoning change is totally inappropriate. The there's also a also a clause here in the in the community development plan, and speaking with industrial development, in which the encroachment on neighborhoods, established communities, villages, and schools is to be minimized. It's in the Madison Development Plan, there in your writing. So we got an existing neighborhood of Frats right below it. You've got all the houses up Fairground Road that are going to look at it. You got all the houses on O'Neills, Courthouse Mountain, and every single resident here who's got kids going to school are going to drive right by it every single day. Need to work, you're going to look at it. It's not viable. And I would ask you guys, all the committee, to kill this thing now before we spend more and more and more time on this thing, bending over backwards, changing the rules that are in place for all of us to get along. For what reason? For the twenty thousand dollars that they're proposing giving to the budget a year? It's nothing for what, you know, but say the detriment caused to the community.
Anyone else?
Hang on real quick.
Good evening. My name is Erin Nichols. My husband Alan, and you'll forgive our passion, obviously, we are a big stake in this. And it certainly has been very eye-opening to go ahead and start to look at the zoning and look at the development. And as Alan said, we are not opposed to solar, and but we're incredibly concerned, and again, very passionate about the change in the zoning. And and I think it was brought up about the solar and eye level, and I think anybody who lives in Madison County knows, we don't look at eye level. That's not why we love Madison. We love Madison because we can see the rolling hills, because we have amazing topography here. Nobody that sits on O'Neal's Road, on our road, on Orange Road, or on Courthouse Mountain is looking at eye level. They're going to be looking directly at whatever sits there. And I think the question here is the zoning in which you're recommending to the board making this change, too, would be incredibly detrimental, whether it's solar or something else. There are so many other sites that I feel like we can go ahead and, as Madison County resident, make good decisions on, put them in places where it makes sense. And I would really call you to go ahead and and look at Adam's letter that he wrote to the board. I think it's incredible what he has pointed out here. Not that we're against solar, they obviously want renewable energy. There are more effective ways to go ahead and do this. But I just really want you to consider all of the zoning implications if we are bending over backwards for this company to change the zoning, what that means to so many people and what that means to people coming to our county and who are visiting, who are driving up 29 on that Well Child Road. What it means to our kids that we converted farmland into something totally different. And they see that every day. If you've got kids, you know they're observant, they're going to see it. So, thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and the board. I'm Adam Gillon Water with the Piedmont Environmental Council. And I won't belabor the point because I think they said it very well and I recognize you all have a copy of the letter that we sent this morning. I do just want to, you know, quickly say the way that we view these sorts of projects, we look at site-specific resource impacts. And in this case with this project, we have identified, you know, the fact that there are an abundance of prime agricultural soils of statewide importance on the property. There are, more than a third of the property is located within conserve Virginia, which is the state's database for the highest priority lands for conservation. And obviously with the view shed map that we all provided to you, there are clear scenic impacts that way. I will say though, our, our largest concern about this is really the industrial zoning implications. And the rezoning to M1 permitting that host of industrial uses in perpetuity. We acknowledge and we really do appreciate the applicants have proffered away all the other by right M1 uses. But in general, there's, there's no guarantee the future applicants would do it or that this might not be challenged if ownership of the property changes hands in the future. One other point I think is salient for the consideration tonight is the fact that there are a number of studies and analysis and plans that are part of the special use permit process of this that really I think would be important for the, the public and for the planning commission and the board to have in making this decision about the rezoning, knowing what's coming down the pike. So I just appreciate you all taking a look at the letter, considering the comments that we had. But as this, in the event that this moves forward, we'd really appreciate if you all would take a look at your ordinance as well and considering permitting this by special use permit in A1 or C1 so that the underlying zoning doesn't change to industrial. Because again, that's our largest concern with these types of projects. Thank you.
Thank you. The, one of the reasons that these are zoned that they are being installed in M1 zones, if I remember correctly, several years ago, the Piedmont Environmental Council came to one of our meetings and that was one of the recommendations. Okay, anybody else in the public? Not? Pete, go ahead.
Pete, you're, you're on.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say that this, this piece of property has been in this family for a lot of years. They've paid a lot of taxes in all those years on this piece of property. And I am a strong advocate of laying this property. That's, that's, that's what I like to add.
Mr. Pete? I think we've
Is it possible to have a conditional rezoning?
There's a conditional rezoning.
Well, I mean, more than a proffer?
That, that would be part of it.
I mean, I think we could ask the applicant if there's something specific that you would like to maybe add as a proffer. I mean, you can ask the applicant if that's something. But as different from a special use permit, the, the proffer or the condition has to be kind of come from the applicant himself. So you're welcome. If there's something that you feel like, you know, could be addressed and proven, then sure, you can ask.
This is the rezoning going with the land or with the ownership?
Yeah, so the rezoning would go with the land and so would the proffer. So if, you know, they decided tomorrow after it's resoned, they want to sell it, it's, 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 you know, it's, it's a cloud on the title. That, you know, if you want to do any of the, any of the by right uses, you know, you'd have to come back through this process. So of course, a special use is already a public hearing process. So you know, to address this comment, I think those are good comments about the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, you know, if you deviate from it, you know, those, those are general guidelines and goals. And it's good to point those out. Always kind of point out that it, it's not, you know, sometimes you make decisions that aren't always maybe jive with the comprehensive plan you'd like to. It is advisory document. But, you know, they're, I guess I'm saying you haven't violated anything in the state if you, you do deviate from time to time, but that's ultimately wise with these folks. So I do think it's a good point to run that.
I heard the question and candidly I have some concerns about it.
Concerns about it. The submitted proffers appear to eliminate all of the by right industrial uses. If that's the case, where all are eliminated except the possibility of submitting an application for a solar farm, then I don't have any particular legal objection to the application. But, but we just need to make sure that those submitted proffers do in fact eliminate all.
And I think that it does.
Okay. And I'm confident that it does.
But that remains a concern because, and I go back to the possibility, what happens if the special use permit is not approved or
Special use that has additional conditions that make this property not economically viable as a
Solar installation.
Because then we created a hard situation. And the, the planning commission and the board will feel like they have created a problem for the land of. And I would prefer not to put the county in that position.
So what are you proposing?
Candidly, it would be nice to have clarification that the, or confirmation more accurately, that the rollback taxes would in fact be borne by the, by the developer of the facility.
Sean? I thought you were asking for a recommendation. Oh, to, of that that proffer is being binding. And, and you just, I didn't hear you tell your second comment.
Well, I, I guess the chase, and this may be more appropriately made at the board of supervisors level. But I would recommend tabling this either by the applicant, which gives them six months.
To, you know, bring it back before the board or otherwise tabled by the board of supervisors so that we can get clarification as to who would be on the hook for the rollback taxes if this project does not go the way that the applicant is hoping.
Well, I, I was, I was just tell you, I've been doing this for a little while. This is, as far as a proffer, a condition, this is the standard in multiple communities that I've worked for. If you have a clear statement that's voluntary from the applicant, then it's binding to the property. So I don't, I don't have any concern that they're not going to go back and say, hey, you know, and argue that they're going to bring in. I think Sean's concerns are valid, but I think we, you know, at, at some point, you know, I, I don't want to make it sound like it's a casino, but I guess there are some inherent risks to this proposal. Worst case scenario, don't get special use permit. You come back and put it back in ag, rezonate back down. That'd be a very expensive venture. But this is the way the ordinance is written. I mean, we're, there's no, you know, I've, you know, at the next stage, you know, if this goes through and passes, we, we know there's a lot of steps and things that still need to be worked out. And again, I don't, I don't know what the decision will be here tonight either. But I guess the rollback taxes are of concern. We definitely don't want the applicant to feel that they're putting a risk here that they don't get their special use permit. But again, we all know this going up front. So I, I would just say focus on the land use decision, taking the comments you've heard and things that are written and try to, try to base your decision on that maybe. And you know, can't control.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Yeah, I will, yeah, I'll read it to you. You know, it's addressed to me today, today. It says, Dear Mr. Webb, regarding our request to rezone 4812C, we request such rezoning for the singular and sole purpose of operating a solar powered electric generating plant to provide electricity for exclusive use of our panic electric corridor. The, the only thing that I would, would like to probably see added to that is we hereby eliminate all by right uses. I think that needs to be a little more clear. Would, would that be something that you, would that be something you'd be interested in just to click?
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Are we, we hereby, right. Yeah, and I think that that's, but just, just, we, it doesn't hurt to be, just make sure we're on the same page.
Any other comments from the planning commission? If not?
I think I made a pretty few years during the workshop meeting. The committee meeting that's probably one of the most clearly probably the people of property has. I don't see it as an M1 zoning property. It seems, that seems inconsistent or so. But I, I get why they're doing, you know, I get the whole process of everything, but I have concern that this is deep mission 2533 down the road. With Sean Rick saying we're good to go. County attorney's stance that not going to be an issue. Some of the attorneys will trust us for 30 years.
That would be up to the county at the time. Okay. I think we've beat this up sufficiently tonight. Not being tabled. Motion from the planning commission on how to proceed on this. No, we have a letter.
Yeah, I think what we could do is if, if you, if you make the motion with the letter, with the, a, a, kind of the addendum to it, and approve it that way. I, I believe that would be fine and I will, I will get the applicant if they concur, which we're here in meeting. They concur with this. It's voluntary. They'll add that one little statement to the end. I think we, we're appropriately covered. Right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend based on RZ, that's CR9, that's 21, that's 12, with an advised proffer letter for a good rollback and first.
You have a second? Second.
Pete, Pete, we have a motion of Commissioner Carpenter to approve in a second.
I'm voting aye.
Okay. He said he will vote aye, yes.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you very much. Let me remind anyone again, the board supervisors are going to address this as soon as planning commission turns. But the last thing on our agenda was a discussion of potential amendments to the commercial solar energy facility ordinance. Having a, we'll discuss this at our next workshop meeting. Everybody has all the documentation to have all vetted. Hopefully at that meeting, we'll have the supervisors on how we would recommend that to proceed on that. So impressions with the commission. Public. Now can I get a motion to adjourn? At a first? Second, all in favor for adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, Pete, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Pete.
Okay, I'll do it, yeah, bye-bye.
You're more than welcome, we're glad to have you. Giving you a moment if you want to, if not, stay seated, we're going to do business. That's fine. Good. I'd like to call the board supervisors portion of this meeting to order. We do have a form, we do need to adopt the agenda. We need to add to the agenda on consent agenda items. Item three, which is supplemental for finance consultant. And then number four, the press array event application. These will be considered under the consent agenda. Anybody else have anything we need to add to this agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, motion made, seconded, further discussion. Here and known, all in favor, seconded, five of us saying aye. I vote the same sign. Case number SU-09-21-10. Mr. William Robbins has applied for a special use permit to operate an automotive repair shop on an A1 agricultural zone parcel. In the A1 zoned district, an automotive repair shop is allowable by special use permit. The subject parcel is roughly 16.8 acres and contains a single family dwelling. The automotive repair shop would be, would operate from an existing accessory structure, a detached garage. The partial dwelling has a postal address of 1190 Seville Road, Madison, Virginia, and is identified on Madison County's tax map as 54-31. It's been recommended by the planning commission with the proffer letter that has, I believe, seven conditions on it. Ligon, anything to add to this?
No, just the seven conditions again are, are here. They're, if, if the intent is to approve with these conditions that were presented, I will send him a letter. And these conditions will be clearly sent to him, he'll know what they are. So that's what he'll be living by.
Board, anybody have any questions for Mr. Webb? Just, I just got the one where Mr. Robbins has signed off on those conditions, right?
Yeah, we've, we've talked about it and he's.
All right. Mr. Robbins, do you have anything to add to the board? Anybody have any questions, Mr. Robbins? To the public? Anybody have any public comment on this case? Back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number S U dash oh nine dash twenty-one dash ten with the proposed conditions.
Okay.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion. Here and now, all in favor, second five, say aye. Put the same sign. Case number, thank Mister Robbins. Case number S U dash oh nine dash twenty-one dash eleven. Laura and Sean Fields have applied for a special use permit to operate an automotive repair shop on an A one zone parcel. In the A one zoning district, an automotive repair shop is allowable by special use permit. Fields owned two adjoining parcels. The automotive repair shop would operate from the, and from an exist, existing accessory structure located on a roughly eleven point nine acre parcel. The adjoining six point four two acre parcel is the location of the home and has a postal address of three seven nine Burt Hollow Road, Banco, Virginia. The parcel proposed to be, to be the location of the automotive repair shop does not contain a postal address at this point, but is identified on Madison County's tax map as twenty-one dash eighty-three C. Um, again, we have a recommendation, a recommendation from the planning commission with six conditions, that go with this recommendation and S U P. I want to go to Mister Webb, but I think we probably should go to Sean Greg to talk about the right of way and discovery of that, if this is the correct right of way. Sean, you have any comments on that?
Essentially what I stated before.
And, and here's what my concern is. The fields have demonstrated. And they have sent me evidence that they certainly have a needed right of way. Um, the issue remains however, whether, and candidly, I learned some of this tonight. Really heard a representative that this right way has never been used by fields, by one of the speakers. Um, in light of that circumstance, I believe that the prudent thing for the board of supervisors to do on this matter is to table it. I have an opportunity and I can probably do it hopefully sometime tomorrow. Go back and confirm that there are no other rights of way for the property. I would also like the opportunity to consult with a surveyor to confirm that the right of way that Mister Fields had described and provided information of that.
Is in fact right of way at issue, um, that would be serving this repair shop. So my recommendation to the board would be to, um, table this matter until the next meeting of the board of supervisors so that I can satisfy myself that the, um, road is what Mister Fields have represented it to be. Once I've satisfied myself with that, I cannot think of a legal impediment to prevent, um, approving the special use permit.
You are thinking, well, um, you get this taken care of by the fifteenth of September, the next meeting?
Um, I, and I, I will be in the Madison County Clerk's office researching this tomorrow afternoon.
Um, thanks, Mister Greg. Um, I think we still need to review the process here. Um, Mister Webb, do you have anything else to add other than that specific comment?
No, I mean, I think it's great that, you know, Sean can, can go look at the, everything that I've looked at. But, um, yeah, that, that's, um, I don't see any, any issue with that at all.
For purposes of clarification. For purposes of clarification, I am more concerned to have a surveyor identify it as being one in the same right of way. But in any event, I can take care of that tomorrow.
All right, everybody understand that. Um, to the board, did we have any questions for Mister Webb on this that do not pertain to the right of way issue? Mrs. Fields, anything else to add that you didn't state already or would like to state again?
I would just like to point out to the board and to Mister Greg that the neighbors have had twenty years to provide documentation and to dispute this right of way. And they have not done so until now and they have not provided any documents showing the location of any other road. So I, I think that he, I'm certain he will find that the right of way is in the location I provided. However, it would delay this process. I'm a little unclear who pays for the surveyor's time.
Who pays for the surveyor's time, Sean Greg?
I have friendly relationships with lots of surveyors.
So he says he's not getting it done and he's going to take care of it. Um, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, please, I've got. Or, and, and Mister Fields as well, probably. Yeah, I mean, since, um, we're reviewing this application, I, I definitely have, have some questions. So, do you know, how, how many children meet the bus there at that?
Um, weavers are, have two, the hearse have two. That's all I can think of at the cul-de-sac and then the walls has have two, but they, they're a step down.
So, surprised to say, we're looking at four, five.
Six. In the morning, in the afternoon, there's seven.
You might not know this, do these children walk through those mailboxes to meet the bus? How do you pick up your grandchild?
We, we wait at the cul-de-sac.
Does anybody else work?
I think everyone else does.
Cul-de-sac as well? Same, okay. So no children are walking up and down the, the driveway, the private drive, getting to the bus stop?
Not, but I don't know.
So I wanted to ask, um, Mister Fields to give me an overview of how your business works. Hours of operation, number of automobiles in the lot, disposition of the oil coolant and that sort of thing. I, to, to be clear, to be transparent to everybody, I went up there yesterday and, and where we had put a ten car limit on, uh, Mister Robbins, there, there's no use in doing it, uh, for this property because there's not room to put more than ten cars there. But, you know, so, um, hours of operation, number of automobiles on the lot, typically your disposition of the oil coolant, tax a?
Eight to four, Monday through Friday. Um, I don't do anything on the weekends, except we do horse riding. As for any type of fluids, I have disposal places, I take them that have used oil furnaces, the fire department for one. And I also have a friend that does it. As a matter of fact, I took them out yesterday. And I don't have large amounts of oil because I don't, I don't really go after that kind of thing. But sometimes you have to do it for
Sure.
a particular pair. So that's about it.
And what all taxes are you all paying? This field brought up a couple of, so, sales tax.
Yeah, or sales tax, I guess IRS and all that. She handles all that stuff, I don't know.
Personal property.
Yeah.
Equipment, yeah.
Equipment, yeah.
Uh, so what are the typical repairs that?
They're usually large jobs. Um, we have one down there now, it's been there two and a half months because I can't get parts for it. It seems to be a thing that's going around all over the country. I guess it's due to the COVID issue. But, um, we, we had to end up fabricating a fuel tank cradle for it and that's the only way we could get the parts. And, you know, the truck's only about seven years old, but, um, do a lot of work on, uh, like the six oh Fords, the Power Strokes, six two, six sevens, we do a lot of that work. I don't know how many people around the county that do it, but I do it, so. And air conditioning and all that kind of stuff, so.
And, uh, where, where do your customers come from? How do they hear about you? Do you advertise? Where do your customers?
A lot of them actually come from Otis Weaver. So, because they'll come ask them and they'll like, no, we don't want to mess with it. And they'll give them my number. That's pretty much the way it is because I've never advertised. It basically just works from there.
Yeah. Um, so what changes in your business model do you foresee if you receive a special use permit? Do you see your business increasing, staying the same? Uh, are you going to become a daily?
No. Um, a lot of people ask me about state inspection and all that now.
That was.
I'm not going to mess with any of it.
Questions on here.
Because I make, I mean, I don't need to make a fortune and I don't, you know, pay my health insurance and all that kind of stuff. And that's about it.
Uh, so, uh, do most of your clients drive their vehicle up to your shop or?
Most of the time. And sometimes cars break, they won't run. You got to have them brought in on a rollback.
Right. That's most of the time they're break, they're driving them up there.
Yeah. And then somebody will follow them to pick that person up and, and take them.
Yeah. Yes, so I did have, would you be amenable to proffering that you will not become an inspection station?
Yeah, I will. Besides, it, it would be difficult, um, you know, for the state to kind of honor that anyhow.
Yeah.
So.
So, um, yeah, I understand that you called the county and asked about a business license. So, um, I, I've read the articles in, in Mad Rapid and some other places and heard the rumors that you were operating illegally. And I, I do understand, I did the same thing. I grew up here, I moved out of, of the county for twenty-eight years and came back and, and I called them and said, do I need a business license? They said no. So you asked the question, like, it just wasn't the right question, as it turns out. And you didn't know to ask the other question.
I didn't pay any attention.
I'm a little disappointed that whoever gave you that answer didn't say, no, we don't have a business license, but you need a special use permit. I'm, I'm a little disappointed in that. And I'm sure that, uh, that the folks we have in place now would, would follow up.
Well, it's been at least two years ago that I made that call because I've been thinking about this for a long time.
Right. Um, so, I mean, I, I have spoken with, uh, more folks. I, I talk to a lot of people about stuff like this. I mean, this is an important one. And I've spoken to more folks that are in favor of this than not. And, um, I got to say that under the current conditions in this world of ours, where the unemployment offices are full of people, uh, and, and you have folks, all I've heard in the last year and a half is people don't want to work anymore. You know, they sit on their, uh, butts and, you know, make, do unemployment. And now we've got somebody that wants to work. So especially with, with a low key operation like this. So, um, I, I would be inclined, uh, to, to favor the special use permit. Other questions for the fields?
Well, I have, um, I, I've been up there twice now. And that road is really narrow. There's no way that Amber and I can meet on that road and get around each other.
There are some state roads that are just like it.
I don't know. I don't know about state roads just like it, but I know that road's just like it. And I know Ms. Hurst had told me, I think her children, or one of her children at least, do walk to the bus stop on that road. And I know they had concerns that their children can no longer ride their bikes or their four wheelers because of trucks coming in and out, uh, the large trucks. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of business and I'm in favor of you having your business, but I, I'd like to see it done right. And I don't know if that road could be widened.
Anything's possible.
Yeah, I know it's possible, but is it, is it a thought? Is it something that, that could be thought of? Because it's, it's not a good road. It's not a good road for a business to be on. And also I think you said you hadn't advertised, but haven't you advertised on Facebook and the Madison website?
No, I have not.
We are registered with the Chamber of Commerce, but we have not advertised on Facebook.
Well, my concern again, I'm for the business. I don't have a problem with your business. I do have a problem with that road and the families coming in and out on that road and meeting vehicles. That, that to me is dangerous.
Other comments? Questions, thoughts? All right. Thank you all. To, to the public. To the public. Yes, ma'am. We, we, we'll be, we'll be glad to have a copy, Miss Hurst. Um, other comments from the public? Yes, sir, Mister Hurst. Oh, good. Uh, yeah, we've been down this road. Um,
So, uh, Mister Hurst, when, uh, Amy Hurst and Joe Hurst and you, all three of you stood up there and said that, and I wrote it down, we have no problem, we support the business, but we have an issue with the easement. So if the easement is the issue, then that's, that's the sticking point and we got to get that resolved as I see it right now.
Right. It's a two part problem though. Because what Sean Greg is referring to is if the easement that is being used is actually what's needed. That's, I believe, what Sean Greg's thinking.
Yeah, because there's another road there.
The, the other side though, is what I explained earlier, is if it is on the existing easement and the Hurst family has issue with it, it's really not our business. It is a civil matter. I don't know if you can hear that, but he said correct. Um, the approval of the, of the access or of this business, when it, when it's looking at our side of it, the right of way is not really the issue. That's between the property owner. If you do contest the easement, take them to court. I know that's a pain in the neck and not kind of the Madison way, but that is the remedy on them. What we're talking about and the potential of tabling is on the basis, is that right of way the actual needed right of way? Because that is pertinent, boss.
Why would the fellow sold it to me when he didn't have no right of way to it, no easement or nothing? And the other piece below it the same way. And I bought it and Mister Cave, I bought his land and I, Eddie Grayson made me, or didn't make me, told me that I had to put a fifty foot right of way from the state road to my daughter's house to get up. She wouldn't give me a building permit. How did he get a building permit when it's four on my private driveway? Well, I want to know.
Four works. Um,
Mister Green helped me to put it up, so we got the easement on that.
To answer your question, the fifty foot is by our code, Madison County code. The, the part that, about his easement and where he's at on it, and he's provided us documentation too. And when we send Sean Greg to the, the court, uh, clerk's office up there and then when we, he gets a surveyor out there, we will know. The, 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 the kind of, the thing that bothers me, and it does bother me. What year did you build your house, oh two? Oh one? And this is just becoming an issue, the easement tonight, twenty twenty-one? And I understand, if business is different and it changes the use, I got it. But something doesn't add up a whole lot there.
If it's a law.
I mean, if, if the easement is the issue, and I'm not here to argue with you. I mean, I really not, it looks like we're going to have to table it till thirteen. But that does look like that's, it's some, something's funny there. And I do understand the change in use.
Look forward, hold me on my, on my driveway and it will be sick if you let his, his shop go on. And it's no way, it's not going to stay like that, I promise. They're not going to run over my, over my children.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Other public comment? Other public comment, please, yes, sir, please. Other public comment? All right, back to the board. It does look like we need to table this until the thirteenth. I'm sorry for the inconvenience to everybody. But I, my, my thoughts are Sean Gregg's saying he needs to check and he needs to check because that is county responsibility. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we table case number SU dash oh nine dash twenty-one dash eleven.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Here in none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Post same sign. On the thirteenth, we're going to be talking about this again. It'll be around four o'clock when we start, uh, fourteenth, I'm sorry, fourteenth. Um, we start at four o'clock and probably get to this somewhere right around five. Glad to have anybody who wants to come. All right, case number RZ dash oh nine dash twenty-one dash twelve, James Field, Gene Field and Springbook Farms and Madison LLC. Tina Weaver have submitted an application to rezone roughly ninety-one point eight nine acres, split zone, A1 agriculture and B1 general business. Zone parcel to M1 limited industrial with conditions. The application has, the applicants have submitted a proper letter voluntarily eliminating all by right M1 uses. If rezoned, the applicant have have, nah, I don't think we voted on the motion, did we? On the table?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I caught myself. Um, the applicant have submitted a proper letter voluntarily eliminating all by right M1 uses. If rezoned, the applicant have, applicants have indicated subsequent applications would be submitted requesting a zoning text amendment and a special use permit in order to develop a solar farm, AKA a commercial solar energy facility. On the subject parcel, this, these potential applications would also require public hearings. The subject parcel does not currently contain a postal address but is located on South Seminole Trail Route twenty-nine and adjoins Yoder's Country Market. The parcel is identified as Madison County Tax Map forty-eight dash twelve C. Ligon, anything else to add on this?
No, I, I would just, again, if, if we would to add that one statement. We, we have concurrence that will hear in public meetings that the applicant is in agreement. That I would just simply add a statement to the proper letter saying we hereby eliminate all by right uses from future consideration. And I'll just add a little bit, just to make sure it's clear unless a rezoning application is resubmitted for review. If you did want to, uh, so is that acceptable to applicants? Okay, so I'm getting a nod there, so I think they agree with that and we can get that rewritten and signed, so other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Questions for Ligon? From the board? Anybody? To the applicants? Yes, sir, Mr. Fields. Thank you, Mr. Fields. Um. Mr. Fields asked to table the motion. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Fields on this? To the public? To the public, please, yes, sir.
I'm going to read you everything. I'm sure everyone heard you now, but. But, um, like I said, we're to, you know, strongly consider hearing this one, Bill, for all the reasons, all the criteria presented is clearly listed. It's already been defined. The mission of the county, the vision that's been put together so carefully to build our community, not just to the right town, but to going forward. It's all laid it out, so we don't focus on these little issues and then we're talking. In order to go, in order to want to be, most particularly, most particularly, we don't, not particularly, at all. Despite the potential of wrong view, our community as a whole, the little issues.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. One thing on that, uh, yeah, Mr. Nichols, you very well spoken and, and obviously have done some homework and now you'll have time for. But I would call your attention to the fact that also part of the comprehensive plan is Route twenty-nine corridor study and in which we have designated a mile on either side of twenty-nine as a, as a business corridor. You know, to, to be developed at, you know, at some point, so anyhow, I just wanted to throw that out.
What's our business? Yes, industrial power plant, not so much.
Yeah, well, take it. I just thought I'd also, you know, show that side of it too. All right, thank you. Other public comment on this case? Other public comment? All right, back to the board. Sean Gregg, understand that the applicant request to be tabled, the board has to accept the tabling of that application?
Um, the board has the right to accept the table and I think it's appropriate in this case to do so.
What's the pleasure of the?
Would need to act on within one hundred and eighty days if the applicant is wanting to tables.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the applicant's tabled at the applicant's request.
Yes, you got it.
Second.
Um, motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Here in none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Post same sign. Um, all right, thank y'all. We do have four items under our consent agenda. Does any of them need to be pulled out, talked about? What would y'all like to do?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Here in none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Post same sign. Now we have generalized generic public comment. Does anybody have any of that type of public comment?
Can I say one thing, I don't, this on agenda? Crest array has submitted an application, is that?
That was part of it.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So I just, you had this before you, they wanted to do it on September twenty-fifth. This application just would kind of be a good model for, we talked about these administrative, I think they've done an excellent job of, of, you know, they've talked to emergency services and everyone seems to be on board. They put, you know, they've showed us everything, so, one, I think it's a good model, you know, if we do choose to amend this in the future and maybe we can talk about it the fourteenth.
Yes, sir.
Or the next meeting, but if you have enough information before you.
We just voted on it.
You voted on it tonight?
Yeah, no, we just voted on it. Yeah, we're good. No, we, I appreciate the comments in a lot of ways, I really, really do. Good comments, a hundred percent, we all like it, good cause, uh, everybody's behind that.
Cool.
We'll see you on the fourteenth. All right, other generic public comment? All right, back to the board, what y'all want to do?
Move to adjourn. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion here in none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All right, post same sign, thank y'all.